Accessories, you're putting holes in that. So to the finance director's point, I think part of the secondary market would, whether it's police agencies or security agencies, these vehicles will still fit the bill for those purposes and they're still in pretty good shape. So that's where I've been reluctant and these, you know, for these frontline, particularly police cruisers, that's hardware and tear. Braking systems, acceleration systems and so forth, transmission, just because of the nature of what they do and how they respond. Enterprise has been very, very confident that there is a solid market here, that this is a can't miss opportunity and we've had such a good experience to this date. I think it's worth a gamble and again, to the finance director's point, we simply have no other option for next year. And with the number of cruisers that have been involved, had no fault of officers to incidents this year that have affected, you know, the mechanical systems to various cruisers, we really, we really need to do something, so.
Do I have a motion?
It's a vote.
Moved by the mayor to have a second.
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean. Any other comments or questions before we vote on this? So, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, we are taking into consideration, of course, overly inflated prices compared to what we originally started at, correct? So like even on your guys' original list, it looks like the total lease charge per month back in 2020, we're looking at basically a hundred and one dollars charged per month. But then, of course, we've got a 2022 that's a hundred and sixty-six dollars total lease charge per month. And I'm assuming that as we get more vehicles in this fleet, we're going to see another increase for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Well, I think the base price of a vehicle would increase, but we do gain equity in these vehicles, or at least that's how the program works to date. And so a lot of times when we replace a vehicle, we're leasing it at a rate that was less than what we were leasing the prior vehicle for because of the equity that we have. So it's actually worked out that, you know, we may lease a vehicle for, you know, four hundred dollars a month. Like, for example, that Equinox that's at a hundred and fifty-nine dollars in monthly rent, the reason that that's so little is because we had equity in a vehicle prior to that, that we rolled into that. So it knocks down that monthly fee as we gain equity in the vehicles. So ideally, in a perfect world, you have some equity. When they turn around and sell that, they apply that to the new lease rate and the equity that you have obtained outweighs the increase in price. Now, there's no guarantee that that would happen, but that has been our experience so far that is that when we've turned around and sold those vehicles, there's been enough equity that we're leasing the next vehicle at a smaller lease rate.
Any other questions? All right, let's call it over.
President Smith.
Hi.
Councilwoman Dean. Uh, it's Councilwoman Brandon.
Hi.
Councilwoman Dean.
Hi.
Mayor Mays.
Hi.
President Ursula.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Great. Are we back up?
I believe so.
Great, okay.
Do you want me to verify?
Yes. Good, we're good to go. Great, all right. For you folks online, we had a little bit of a technical snafu there that cut us out. We're back now and so we're going to go back on our agenda, back to special presentations and I'm going to ask Doug Yates to come forward at this time.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Doug Yates. I live in 2003 Wilberforce Clifton Road in Xenia, Ohio. With me is our treasurer of our Doug Yates Karate Foundation, William Hope, and he'll give you his address.
I actually live in Bell Brook, so.
Right.
Yeah, but they usually don't want me to know our address.
Sure.
Anyway, so before I get on the presentation, there's a couple of things I'd like to start with. I started taking karate here in Xenia in 1973 and at that time, I was a sixteen-year-old kid from a family of seven siblings. So my mom and dad did everything they could to feed us, to clothe us, but most importantly, they did, we did come from a loving Christian family and those moral values, you know, was taught at that young age. And when I come up to my dad to say, I want to take karate, he paid the first month and then he said, after that, you're on your own, son. So Mrs. Leihizer, who was a French teacher at the senior high school at the time, she let me do some on and in jobs around her, she had a couple of houses and paid me just enough so I could take my karate lessons. So I was able and fortunate enough to be able to do that. Through my years of karate, I've had so much blessings from state champions, international champions. The highlight was winning a gold medal at the Goodwill Games in Russia, which was like the Olympics. I was with the Team USA. One of the highlights, marching around the Caribt Stadium in front of eighty-five thousand people worldwide TV with Carl Lewis, Catherine Phil, Shannon Miller, gymnastics and Xenius Doug Yates. So got to do that and it was an amazing experience. So as I'm marching around that track, and I love to tell the story, the fireworks were going off, the torch was lit off, they had jets flying back and forth, music, crowd roaring. I thought of Mr. Stacy. And the reason why I thought of Mr. Stacy, he was my Warner Junior High School, at the time West Junior High School Assistant Principal. I had flunked in the seventh grade and he gave me a break. He called me in the office, he said, you got straight F's. I said, well, I know. He said, you got straight A's in gym. I said, well, I like gym. And he said, but if you start playing sports, I'll erase your detentions because you got a lot, a lot to serve. So that was a great deal for me. But what he did was, he got me involved in sports and I never got in trouble again. He gave me an opportunity. He gave me a chance to do something different with my life than the road that I was headed on. That kind of leads us into what we're doing here. With the successes that I've had throughout my years, Bill was a karate student, his family takes karate, but let's talk about Doug Yates Karate Foundation. And so we got it all approved through the state, so we're, or the government, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we did that. And what we want to do is, our foundation motto is, we want to change lives one kick at a time. All right, kind of a catchy little phrase. But some of the things that you do as a karate student is, let me back up just a second. The foundation is, we want to help kids who are at risk have an opportunity to take karate. There are so many side attributes from studying karate that will help deter. The crime, I mean, if you looked at the statistics from the FBI, it's scary. They're increasing everywhere. The gang involvements at Columbus especially, those bigger cities are leeching out to the smaller cities all over. And if you have sadly at-risk kids who does not have anything to guide them or help them, what happens is they fall by the wayside and they get attracted to that unhealthy environment. We talk about anti-bullying, being able to protect kids from being a bully, picking on other kids, understanding how to recognize it and prevent it. And then we also work on kids, teaching how to have goals, how to set goals, not to be a black belt overnight, but to slowly stair-step all the belt levels as they're developing, setting a small goal, then the next goal, and then the next goal. When they get discouraged, they say, wow, that's so far to be a black belt, but look how far you've come. All right? And so we have five maxims in our karate study and it's called character, sincerity, effort etiquette, and self-control. Those are excellent principles to try to teach and they are woven within the fabric of the way that students are taught. Important emphasis, like I said, is on goal setting, it's on a sense of accomplishments when they get awarded for not only belt levels, but also for competitions and so on. And again, I talked to you a little bit about the anti-bullying and anti-gang information, but the bottom line is to help teach your kids to be good citizens. So real quick, this is just a couple, just from the seventies through now, just different teams throughout the years of kids who were able to compete at national levels and big tournaments. Go ahead. Here are some individual accomplishments, these kids, I mean, you can just look at the smiles and the pride that they feel for their accomplishments that they made. Next, please.
That's my daughter up there, too.
That's his daughter, yeah, there she is, yes, yes. And like I say, another motto is if it's worth having, it's worth working for. I tell the kids all the time, when you grow up, there's going to be one job that you really truly want and it's a good paying job, but there's twenty people that want that job. So how do you get that job? You've got to prepare yourself, you've got to stay focused and you've got to be that best candidate. So anyway, that's, if it's worth having, it's worth working for, right? So here's a couple pictures of some international teams representing the United States. My son up here on the right corner, he was on the United States Olympic team as well when he'd become of age. And here is a picture of him at the U.S. Olympic Training Center. So awesome opportunities. Go ahead. All right, and then we also hold a summer camp every year where the kids come and we rent out in 4H Camp Clifton and the kids come, they learn karate, of course, we eat there, they take current turns doing KP duty because they got to learn to get back, not only take but get back. And swimming, all kinds of activities, but a lot of focus on their training. Here's one of some karate classes going on, your kids working on some flexibility and basic structure. Go ahead. And then one of my proudest things is my Yates family. I have my granddaughter who I'm hugging there, she was the newest black belt of our family. And then to the right is my grandson Mason Atkins, he's a black belt. And then my daughter Melissa Atkins, or Melissa Yates, and then my son DJ Yates. What's significant is I won the national championships when I was competing. My son won the national championships and my grandson won the national championships. So three generations of Xenia national champions. So if you want to go ahead to about what we're doing about the foundation is, the idea is to give at-risk individuals an opportunity to train martial arts, not only for the side attributes like I spoke about, but also for competition. And how do we do that is, is on our website, there'll be, there's different application forms where they'll apply for tuition, karate uniforms, accessories, things of that nature, entry fees into tournaments, things that they need for karate camp, things like that. Also, there's a second tier that we want to look at is helping individual promoters who hold events. The cost of trophies, the cost of venues is just skyrocketing and consequently, the price of tournaments are high. So if we can help relieve the cost of awards and venues, then it lowers that price and gives more people an opportunity to come and compete. And then lastly, what I'm really excited about is an opportunity to give us college scholarship or a trade school scholarship to individuals wishing to continue their education. But, go ahead. And here's just a page here and you have a copy of that, it's just different ways of funding because everything costs a little bit of money, you know, sometimes a lot of money. And the purpose of us coming here is not only to share with you what's going on here in Xenia, but also to solicit information on how can we get grants or how can we open the doors to funding that would help us make this more of a real thing for more individuals. So that's what we're looking for. So our next is, if there's any questions that we weren't happy to address.
Actually, I've got a couple of things to say. So one thing you should know about Doug Yates is like everything we're talking about doing with this foundation and helping kids like pay for, you know, belts, pay for uniforms, pay for tournament fees, this is stuff he's been doing for years out of his own pocket. And like while, and I hate to say it, but you are getting up there in years. While we can't replace him as, you know, a mentor or a teacher or a coach, you know, which he's been for over thirty years now, you know, we're hoping that we can pay forward some of the empathy and the compassion and the love that he's shown the community here. And especially, I mean, for all, you know, all of us that have been in your karate class, my daughters included, like, you know, it's time for us to, as a community, to take what he's put in place and just move it forward. So it becomes a legacy as opposed to something that, you know, may not survive to you. So no offense, of course.
Thank you, Doug. Anyway, so is there any questions from anyone?
So, this is great. And, you know, Doug, one of the, one of the things that's been on my heart is that, so I'm going to start this off, I'm not disparaging Xen community schools, but we have about fifteen percent of our kids don't, don't even graduate high school.
Yeah, I realize that.
And that's not a reflection on what's going on in the classroom, but unfortunately, it's a reflection of what's going on in the family. And it's really tough for a kid to be successful when home is chaos, right? So we have a desperate need in this community to come together and figure out how do we, how do we come alongside of those families and those kids, right? So that they have a path forward to be able to succeed, right? And it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of us to do that. And the, you know, when you talk about the emphasis and the things you're talking about there, for a lot of these kids, they don't have anybody else pouring into their lives, helping them with those kinds of things. And, you know, having you folks and other folks like you stepping up to this in our community is, it's just a desperate need that we have.
Well, I try not to shed tears here because it's very heart-wrenching to me. I teach at the YMCA on Tuesdays and Thursdays and at the end of my classes, I'll have the kids sit down. I have a little talk with them, I talk about how's their grades, are they putting their papers in their book bags neatly so they know how, you know, to get it when they need it? Are they cleaning the room, making their beds? And then the kids start sharing things, like my little brother died, you know, I mean, sharing with me, you know, sharing with the other kids, feeling not threatened to share.
Right.
And that environment is a non-hostile environment where the kids can actually have a community of kids learning individual stuff, but in the community of the same thing, of bettering themselves. And the statistics are there, the crime, just go back to the very beginning, the kids, you know, a lot of the adults that do things they shouldn't start at a young age. So we've got, we've got to get them, we've got to work on them. So, I got you.
I'd like to share one thing. I know when Pete Kramer left FCC, a friend of ours, Dale Halsbauer, took over.
He was my teacher.
He just thinks the world of you. You were a sensei, is that right?
He was my sensei.
He was your sensei?
Yes, he was my teacher.
Okay, yeah, and I know he's, he still does it, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, he's exactly seventy-six years old, ten years older than I.
He just thinks the world of you, I just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
He's a wonderful man, very, he was an inspiration to me.
Oh, yeah, that's awesome.
Anyway, so thank you all.
Any other comments or questions here from anybody else on the council?
Well, I'd like to say that my phone number is attached to the flyer or the handout. If you have any questions, you can go to the website, my email address is at the website. If you have any ideas on where to go, what to do, and how to do, I would greatly appreciate it.
So Doug, I'm going to take you up on that.
Thank you.
And as we're, we've talked this over with the folks at the school and some other entities as well, we need to get a group of us together to have this as a charter of charter for helping kids like this. And like you said, if we come at this from a community and there are places for us as a, I won't necessarily say as a municipal, but as a community to look for funding and grants like that, it probably would help us as we have multiple entities standing up saying, yes, we support this, right?
Absolutely. That's exactly what the vision is.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for stepping out and doing this and just to, you know, I think about every time we drive by here on Second Street, you know, pass.
Yeah, it's my son.
Yeah, it's great, man, and just seeing the kids that are coming in and out of there and stuff, it's just, it's wonderful, so thanks so much.
Well, thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for coming and sharing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we have Karen Pudervall with the Greene County Council on Aging. Karen, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's been a little while. I've seen several of you in recent days at other functions, so. But yeah, I'm Karen Pudervall, I'm the Director of the Greene County Council on Aging. So I'm here to talk to you about, a little bit about the council, but to talk about issue eighteen that is on the ballot. I mean, it's a renewal of the current Senior Services Levy, first passed in 1999. And, you know, the statistics that, of course, everyone wants to know is the, you know, valuation of a hundred thousand dollar house is going to be forty-two dollars a year, so there's no change, no change in that. So, so the levy is administered by the county, the Council on Aging in Ohio. The Ohio Advice Code allows for organizations like ourselves to do that. We're a nonprofit organization, we're not a part of the county government, although we do partner with the county, of course. So the levy generates just shy of six million dollars a year and it actually represents ninety-three percent of the council's budget. Seventy percent of those dollars go to our Partners in Care program, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Twenty-two percent go to the senior centers, of which there are nine in Greene County. And when you look at the wonderful senior center here in Xenia, actually, the funds that we provide to them represents about thirty percent of their budget. This year, the total amount in grant funding is about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Now, on top of that, we actually contract with them for home-delivered meals, some additional transportation and homemaking services. And as we all know, they do a wonderful, wonderful job, great, great partner. We have about five percent of our budget goes to caregiver support, outreach, education. Education information are really the foundation of the organization. And we focus on a variety of topics that we have found that are just priorities with the older population and caregivers in the community, things like obviously caregiving, memory loss and dementia, Parkinson's disease, a variety of the chronic illnesses, and fall prevention, which is one of our, our big areas. And of course, there's always popular retirement health insurance and Medicare. Then three percent of the funds go for administration fundraising, so ninety-seven percent of the dollars actually go for services and programs. As I said, we're a not-for-profit organization, we're governed by a board, I report to a board, I've been with the council. I was the first team member hired back in, before ninety-nine, so I'm coming up on twenty-five, twenty-five years and it's been a true honor and privilege to be involved with the organization. And then we have twenty-nine part-time and full-time team members in different capacities. We're here for seniors, we're here for caregivers, and we're here for community members. We're here for people that have resources, don't have resources, have, you know, we truly are here for everybody. And we all aspire to become an older adult, even the young folks, we all aspire to do that. And what we want is to try to help people have the highest quality of aging experience they can. Partners in Care, as I mentioned, is seventy percent of our budget and that's where care managers work, one-on-one with seniors, couples, any appropriate family, to see what we might be able to do to help maintain them in their home or their family member's home. We're not here for twenty-four-hour care, we're limited in what we can do for a number of reasons, but we have found over the years, over the decades, that a little bit of help can go a long way. And so we actually serve about fifteen hundred seniors in any given month with purchase services, with, you know, again, home-delivered meals, a lifeline button, help with the, help with the house, maybe a bath, that sort of thing. And it costs about, in the neighborhood, three hundred and twenty dollars a month per senior. So it's quite a bargain and if, and we have found that it has delayed the, some of the seniors for going into assisted living or nursing home, which of course costs thousands and thousands of dollars just on a financial perspective. As I mentioned, we're very involved with the Xenia Senior Center, but all the other senior centers, we're very fortunate in this community to have some great resources. I can't, I can't go without talking about Medicare just real briefly, we're in open enrollment. If you know anybody who is a Medicare beneficiary, if nothing else, not related to the levy, everyone needs to get their options reviewed and don't assume that what you have now is going to be what you need come, come January. And even if it is, it's better to get that reassurance than wish that you had gone through the process. So whether we help you out or another entity, please, please get that done, reach out and tell other seniors. But one of the other things that's really important is that the council does a great job, senior centers do a great job, we have a lot of wonderful community organizations, but it still comes down to family, neighbors, church members, friends who provide the care. Seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the care is provided by those individuals. So we are here to help support them in a variety of ways, but we all need to be reaching out to these individuals because it's tough work. No matter how much you love and care for somebody, it's tough work to be, to be a caregiver. The couple of sheets that I gave you, one of course is some specifics about the levy, but it's all, there's also a sheet about some of our stats from 2022, just for your, for your information. But again, the most important thing we do is information and education and we welcome everyone to reach out to us and see if we can share some information that would be helpful, whether your loved ones in this area or maybe out of the area, and just get people to think about this and again, especially the younger folks, because again, we're all aspiring to grow together, so. But I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments from the council? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Karen, I really appreciate you being here tonight and I think a lot of people don't understand how important the meal support is. I remember as a child, my parents had to make the decision for my grandmother to go in a care facility because she would start to cook her dinner and forget. She'd walk away and an apron would catch on fire or a towel, and that was such an unsafe environment. And now you guys provide those meals for people and give them such a safer living environment with them not having to cook that meal. So I just drove by the other day and saw somebody get a meal on Sutton and they were just so happy when they came to the door, so thank you so much for that.
I appreciate those comments.
Yeah, and I'll just speak for myself, I know when my mom, my folks were independent and were planning on being independent for the rest of their lives, which we all are until we aren't, right? And she had a head-on car wreck and when we got her back to the house, I didn't know who to go to, to just make a, is this a safe place for her to be, you know? It wasn't even so much, do we have the financial needs? I mean, I didn't know what to do because I'd never had to experience this kind of thing. And folks from your group came out and did a house assessment for us and really opened our eyes up to things that we weren't even aware of, like the fall prevention and things like that. And we'd made a lot of modifications to the house that we would not have even thought of without having someone who has that knowledge base to be able to come and help us out, you know, at that point. So it's, it's, it's something that happens in every family, whether you're going through this with your, with your wife or your husband or yourself, or you're going through this with your parents, that we're just not that well-prepared for. And it's just what a great resource we have here in the county to have some folks that have that, that can just step in and help us with this. And like I mentioned on the other levies too, just to let folks be aware, I know we all got that shock letter with the reassessment of all our homes and everybody's worried about, oh, what are our taxes going to do and going up? And I would just say that for this particular renewal levy, it, they only get the set value of the original year that the levy was passed. So renewing this does not provide them any additional funds. And what actually happens with the county auditor is that the millage actually goes down so that it can fit with the size of the original levy approval. So you folks, this isn't like there's some big boon of additional money that's going to the organization coming out of this. No, you're basically just asking for the same amount of funds that you've been operating under, that are coming from, from the property taxes here.
That is correct.
And that really is independent of the appraisal value of the homes, so.
And you mentioned in your parent situation about modifying the home, that is something that whenever I have the opportunity, I remind people that we do put grab bars in the bathrooms of folks that are sixty and better. And there's a few limitations here and there, but I, you know, anyone who's listening to this, we would be happy for you to give us a call and see if that's something that we might be able to do for you. Bathrooms are where the majority of the falls happen for our seniors and we need to keep folks upright and as safe as possible.
Great, all right. Well, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you.
We have a family member who is also receiving services and is texting me right now all the wonderful things that she has to say about Karen and the organization that she's watching, so. She says, thank you.
That's great. Real-time feedback.
Real-time feedback.
There you go, that's great, that's great. All right, now we're going to go to our portion of the meeting, which is audience comments. And once again, we delayed this because we have a little bit of technical difficulties, but if anyone else in the audience would like to come and talk to the council, feel free to come up to the podium, just state your name and address, and you've got five minutes to share your thoughts with the council. Okay, none at this time, so we'll press on. We're going to go back into new business at this time and we're going to go to Resolution 2023-054. 2023-054, which is the authorizing acceptance of the Federal Victims of Crime Act, VOA Grant, and the State Victims Assistance Act, SVAA Grant for 2024. Madam Law Director.
Good evening. As you know, the Victim Advocate Division of the Law Department, since 2017, when Marcy's Law was voted into the state constitution by Ohio voters, that puts specific constitutional rights in play for victims of crimes. Earlier this year, the Ohio General Assembly passed House Bill 343, really increase the responsibilities on the Law Department as far as notices that have to be provided to crime victims. So our Victim Advocate Division, I don't know how we would meet those constitutional and statutory requirements without them. They really do help make sure that the city's complying with all those requirements, and they provide services to any victim on a criminal case that we prosecute from the time of arrest through the final disposition of the case. The grants that you are accepting tonight are for 2024. In the past three years, 2022, 2023, and then again next year, we have not seen a reduction in our grant funding. So for the last three years, the amount that we're receiving and the local match has remained the same. The grant amount for 2024 on the federal grant is $75,148, requiring a local match of only $18,787. On the state grant, we've been awarded $4,145. We tend to use the state grant money to pay for the on-call phones, postage, office supplies, printing, and then we do also maintain a small emergency fund. If a victim would need locks changed, if we need to get a hotel room for a victim, we use it for those kind of emergency situations. We saw our federal grant funding cut significantly, if you recall, in 2019. We're happy to see for the past three years, we haven't seen a reduction. Everyone hopes across the country that eventually we'll see that grant funding from the federal level increase back to pre-2019 levels. That hasn't happened yet, but happy to report that we have not had a cut again for the third year in a row. So accepting these two grants tonight, both the Federal Victims of Crime and the State Victims Assistance Act grant, will help fund those services that our Victim Advocate Division provides.
Do a motion?
Send it.
Moved by Councilwoman Brannan. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by the mayor. Any comments or questions? And just put one other observation out is that this requirement that we have as the postcity for the Xenia Municipal Court means that we, we are, we are providing these victim advocacy for anyone who is before the court's jurisdiction.
Yes, we are required, under the Constitution and state statute, the prosecutor is required to provide those services.
Right.
You know, he's one person.
Right.
So the victim advocates, as far as particularly the notice requirements, notifying the victims of all the different stages of the criminal process, they have really stepped up to the plate and, and are handling all that for us.
Right, right. But that's quite a, the, the spectrum of folks, this is basically the eastern portion of the county, the population there, that, that we're providing that for. And that's one of the reasons why these federal grants were so critical for us, because, you know, as we've discussed many times before, we're not, once again, we're not disparaging the court, but the way the state has set up the, the funding, we as a municipality are bearing the majority of the burden for the funding of the court for the eastern portion of the county, and that's just by state law. And a portion of that also is not just, is, is the funding of the court, the funding of the prosecution, but also the funding of the victim advocacy program as well, too.
We're, we are very lucky. State law requires that we prosecute, and this is all municipal courts are required to, the Law Department is required to prosecute any state law violations that occur anywhere in the unincorporated area of that court's jurisdiction. So we are mandated by state law to do that. We're very lucky that Green County, every year, does help fund and, and does help share the cost of the prosecutor. So Green County has always been very supportive of the county commissioners in helping us, you know, meet that, that state mandate.
All right. No other comments, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2023-055, authorizing the establishment of a home preservation program and approving the contract with the Xenia Community Improvement Corporation for the implementation of said program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Staffs recommending city council approve legislation to launch the pilot home preservation program, which would be an effort to reposition residential properties acquired by the city for renovation and owner occupation. City council has previously expressed its concerns with the fact that our historic neighborhoods, some of them have experienced deteriorating physical condition with a lot of the housing, and with the fact that so many historically owner-occupied dwellings in those neighborhoods have been converted into rental properties. The home preservation program seeks to positively impact these dynamics while also implementing strategy on how to divest of properties acquired through the tax foreclosure and other proceedings that we have. Under the guidelines for the program, as provided in your agenda packets this evening, for eligible residential properties acquired through tax foreclosure or possibly other means, the city would seek to clear the ledger of any liens and delinquent taxes. The city would also have an opportunity to improve water sewer line issues, such as lead water line connections on service lines, to address those lingering utility concerns with particularly some of our older properties. Program eligible properties would have available to them property tax abatement incentives that the city would help to facilitate, again, with the intent that we are trying to create an economic proposition for those properties that is, that is beneficial to potential owners. In exchange, the purchasing entity, which could be a redevelopment group or an individual or family, would have to agree to a deed restriction for owner occupancy of five years. And so we feel like that's, that's a good trade-off. As envisioned, this program would be applied directly through the city efforts, or ideally would involve Xenia's Community Improvement Corporation as a transactional partner. For its involvement in the marketing and sales of properties and the administration of the program, the CIC would be entitled to keep a portion of sales proceeds generated from each transaction. Now, we see this as a means of, of helping to provide some additional seed money for the CIC so that they can be engaged in more projects locally. The approval of, of the resolution as presented this evening would authorize both the program to be launched moving forward, as well as the ability to execute a contract with the CIC for its involvement in the program. So again, this is staff's attempt to take a stab at the pilot program to try to address some of the core concerns, concerns that council hasn't addressed, and find a, a way to check off a couple of boxes at the same time with the new program.
Great. Do I have a, a motion here?
Hello?
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by the mayor? Comments or questions?
That's great. Good work.
So I have a question. So when you say owner occupied, so what's the difference between an individual buying that, they have to live in, in that house?
Yeah.
They can't spend that off as a rental?
Correct. Alternatively, if you have a development firm, for example, group of individuals who are, are flipping the property, that deed restriction would, would apply to that next owner. So we would have to record all of that.
The program guidelines are that final buyer, the deed restriction begins the date that sale is made, and it's five years that that home has to be owner occupied.
Got it. Right.
Single owner, not turned into multifamily.
And that's the intent of the program.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to commend you guys for getting this going. And once again, the, the reason we need this program is, as the, as the county's stepping up, you know, good for them, from the auditor and the treasurer and the prosecutor and the sheriff and the Porta common, please to address some of these properties that are way underwater from a property tax perspective and get them back in circulation again. So as, as that process is maturing, many of these properties will come to us in the city. And, and also, just, you know, now that the, you know, working with the Xenia Community Schools and the fact that they're willing to waive, as, as the rest of the lien holders of those property taxes have said, we'll, we'll waive those so that those can come to the city, and so we're not burdened by those, by those taxes. But we have to have a methodology of turning this over because we're not looking to be landlords and managing massive quantities of properties and stuff. And so this is our, this is our tool to start that. And we've got a handful of properties currently that we own that we're looking to bring into this. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. Yep.
We, we got five this year through the forfeiture process. One thing I want to make sure council understands, tax foreclosure does not mean we're going to get a property. If there is an outstanding mortgage, if there is a federal tax lien, if there is a state tax lien, we do not take that property by forfeiture. Because if we did, we take it subject to that mortgage or that lien. And we, we have 10 days on a forfeiture to tell the court we want it. That's not enough time to try and get that waived. So I do see a lot of properties come through the foreclosure process that are offered to us by forfeiture. It's not even an option to take them. It's just not an option. The solution to that is the county auditor holding a forfeiture sale.
Correct.
If you buy, if the city were to acquire the property at that sale, then we take it free and clear of all liens. So there are quite a few properties that come through the foreclosure process that we can't take by forfeiture.
Right, right.
That's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah, and that county auditor sale is three or four steps downstream.
The, the forfeiture sales would actually be more helpful to us
Right.
than the tax foreclosures themselves are.
Right.
And I would add, I think there, and we've discussed some of this with the council previously, there should be some additional follow-up conversations, perhaps moving into next year with council on how proactive you want to be in some of these cases. As the Law Director points out, there are opportunities downstream that strategically could be very valuable. But there'd have to be some authorities granted through council, from council to staff, to be able to take those into consideration. This program will help to provide opportunities, strategic opportunities for a, a narrow group of properties. Not every property that goes through this process is going to, is going to fit the criteria as we've laid that out.
Right.
And, and that was intentional. We want to be very careful that we're positioning this pilot program for success. As the Law Director points out, a lot of these properties that start through the process have some type of liens or mortgages on their property. The city's not in a financial position to take those obligations on, especially when these properties are, are coming through the circumstance because they're upside down to begin with. So there are properties that are still problematic for us that we're going to continue to find some other solutions for.
Right. Right. Well, the good thing is that at least we're getting the, the ice jam starting to move.
Yep.
And, I mean, we, I mean, there are literally hundreds of these properties that are in Xenia and in Fairborn that are just blight on our community. And we have not had any means up to this point to be able to, to, to start engaging with those and trying to get them turned over to someone who actually try to be a productive member of the community and participate in community as well, too. So, yeah. All right. Any, any other questions or comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2023-056 endorsing and nominating Mayor Sarah Mays as the at-large municipal representative to the Green County 911 Committee. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. In response to recent changes in Ohio law and the establishment of new mandates for 911 services, the Green County 911 Committee must be reconstituted. The new committee must now include the following. That's a member of the Board of County Commissioners or a designee, who shall serve as a chairperson of the committee, a chief executive officer of the most populous municipal corporation in the county, a member of the Board of Township Trustees of the most populous township in the county as selected by a majority of the Board of Trustees, a member of the Board of Township Trustees selected by a majority of township trustees in the county pursuant to the resolutions they adopt, a member of the legislative authority of a municipal corporation in the county selected by the majority of legislative authorities of the municipal corporations in the county, again, pursuant to resolutions they adopt, and an elected official from within the county appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. The fifth one of that list is the one that we're concerned with here this evening. The committee is charged with updating the county's 911 plan and developing an implementation strategy for the conversion of all of our public safety answering points in Green County to be compliant with next-generation 911 service capability. These are critical responsibilities closely related to important services provided by the city, which we provide to, really to a large portion of Green County through our Green Xenia Central Communication Center. After discussions with city council and previous council, a motion to, to tap the mayor, Mayor Sarah Mays, as a recommended representative to the committee, we bring this resolution forth this evening, this would, with approval, endorse and nominate Sarah Mays, our mayor, as the municipal elected official representative to, to this body. This is the only position on which, on the board which the city would be eligible to have a representative. I feel, I think the staff feels very compassionately that, as the most experienced public safety answering point operating in the counter, we, in the county, we operate the largest, we need to be very invested in this. And the mayor is well-educated on these things, and so we think she would be appalled to do this. So that is the purpose of the resolution. We recommend approval this evening.
Great. Do a motion?
Hello?
Moved by Councilwoman Dean, second by Councilwoman Dean. Questions or comments before we move on? Sarah, thanks for stepping up to this.
Thank you.
It's really important for us, and once again, the state legislator has to find the composition of this, this group. And so there, there are municipalities and townships that are just delegated this responsibility, given this responsibility by state law, but then both the townships get one at-large member, and we, as the various other municipalities have an at-large member. We just want to be proactive and get our, our member out there, recommendation out there ahead of time, and make sure this house and council ran to get back if we do that.
I appreciate the vote. Comments?
Yeah.
One other party clarification, Mr. President. The, in order for the mayor to be appointed, there will have to be a majority of legislative bodies of municipalities around the county that want to endorse her for that purpose.
This is, this is just us putting our candidate forward, then, then the, the at-large municipalities are going to have to, to vote on that.
Yeah. And as I've made counsel aware, I've reached out to my cohort of managers and administrators around the county of the municipalities, essentially putting them on notice that it was our intent to, to endorse and recommend the mayor. I am not aware of any other actions in the queue with other municipalities. This is an urgent matter. We're already several months into the fiscal year when this was required. The county has to come back with a plan in March of '24. There's a lot of work to do here. And so it, I'm hopeful that our, our sister communities around the county can take action on this pretty soon because it's, it's pretty urgent.
Sure. Great. Thanks. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Our last item under new business is Resolution 2023-057, approving the 2024 City Employee Insurance Program and authorizing the renewal of the city's agreements with the Jefferson Health Plan, custom-designed benefits to Superior Dental and UH Secret. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. We are recommending approval of this resolution this evening, which would allow us to send it to motion our employee wellness benefits program for 2024. Among the key points with this set of recommendations, we would continue our membership with Jefferson Health Plan Consortium. This will be, 2024 would be our third year as members of the plan, and I think the staff collectively feels, and, and, and let me back up, I should say, that we've arrived at these recommendations because of what we instituted years ago through our insurance committee, which has union representatives from all of our collective bargaining units.
That's right.
Our administrative services director, Jackie Potter, finance department, city manager's office have a representative. They evaluate, they monitor and evaluate these benefit situations through the course of every fiscal year, and then they come back to the appointed officials with recommendations of every fiscal year, and then they come back to the appointed officials with recommendations annually. So there's a lot of vetting that goes through this process and a lot of employee input and buy-in to arrive at these recommendations. So through that process, that, that insurance committee has identified a recommendation to continue Jefferson Health. We feel like that that's been a very valuable partnership. With this plan, our overall plan increase, cost increase is 7.15% after some changes to some things. That, that is a substantially good deal, given the trend environment for, for medical and for health insurance at present. Couple other points to note, the IRS increased the 2024 high deductible health plan deductible limit to $3,200, so an increase was necessary over the current $3,000. There were some recommendations to increase that deductible to 35, just given the, the overall numbers and dynamic within our, 3,500 per single and I should say 7,000 for families. So again, there are some increases that both employees and the city have to incorporate, both from a deductible standpoint, from, from a max out-of-pocket standpoint and so forth. The increase in HSA out-of-pocket maximum from $4,000, single to $8,000 family, and $4,500, single to $9,000 fam, per family respectively. Trying to see what else here was relevant. On the dental, there's a renewable Superior Dental at a reduction of 6.5% with a two-year rate guarantee, so we're, we're pleased to see something going down with this. For the life, voluntary life, a renewal with United Healthcare at a 0% increase and a two-year rate guarantee. We're in the middle of a four-year rate guarantee with the Vision, so no action there, and Teladoc had no increases, so no action there. So comprehensively, just to, to put a bow on it, we're sustaining the, the current level of service, slightly increased cost for all of us. This is something that we continue to monitor very closely every year. The breakdown in the cost for, for an employee to have family coverage is enormous. It's enormous. And we're talking the range of $30-plus thousand dollars per employee who has family coverage for us. So that's why we continue to look very creatively. Where employees have options that might be better, we have an opt-out program that would continue under this. And then we offered these two different solutions to, to try to maximize the opportunities for, for our employees and their families to get the benefits that they need. But again, just want to commend the insurance committee for their work, and then we recommend council approval this evening. It's important that we get that approval to lock in these rates for the forthcoming term. We have a deadline to do that, so we're asking for approval of that resolution this evening.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any questions or comments before we vote?
Just want to say thank you, Jackie. This does a lot of work. Appreciate you working this. This is really good.
All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brand?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. We're going to move on to the appointed officials' reports. Mr. Finance Director?
I have nothing to note this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ryan? Just to say, Ryan, thanks. We had our, and we'll talk about, probably a little bit more later on, we had our budget for the finance committee meeting, but just thank you for, as always, being well aware of all the facts and figures and helping us out with that, so.
Sure.
Man of Law Director?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay, any questions for our law director? Okay, thanks, Jeanette. Mr. City Manager?
And then I ruined the trend with a half a dozen items, or more, actually. Couple of announcements and a number of updates for council, and I do need some input on, on one or two items. First, you should have all received tonight your budget books. I want to thank the Assistant City Manager and the Finance Department for their efforts in putting those materials together. Those are available digitally as well, so we encourage you to begin to look through that. Again, the budget book contains both the, the initial proposed 2024 operating budget as well as our five-year capital improvement plan consolidated into that document comprehensively. We still have some very critical conversations to have with various council committees, looking at some stacking issues and concerns, as well as some of the program concerns for 2024, some of which are not included in this budget at this time. So again, we're in the process of establishing some of these, schedule or scheduling some of these meetings with council committees to initiate that. So please begin to look at that. As always, if you have questions, myself, Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, Assistant City Manager can be of assistance with that. Second, I want to announce to council, we, Public Service Director and I had a, a meeting with the municipal court judge and administrator this week to discuss the Justice Center Security Project. It is our intentions to move forward later this year, probably around December, with the bid package for that project, with the intent that we would come back probably by the end of the year with a recommendation for an award of bid and start in construction sometime mid-first quarter, the end of first quarter next year. Hopefully, we'll have that project completely done by the end of second quarter next year. We think the construction on that will probably not be more than 90 days, knock on wood. It's not a terribly complicated project, but we will be taking steps as we establish the timeline for that project to make the general public aware of some accessibility restrictions for that facility and working with the court to make sure that anybody with special needs to get into the building will have access because the, the main entrance to the elevator will be, will be blocked off for a period of time. Next, I want to provide council just a brief update on the Public Safety Information Sharing Network. There's been some colorful emails, a lot of discussion and conversation going back and forth, but I am pleased to report that there have been a series of conversations this, this week that I think have advanced, perhaps to some more conclusive outcomes with that project. There was a, a full PSISN board meeting on Monday. That's a good and bad. The good news is it wasn't a train wreck. The bad news, it was still a four-car accident. I think coming out of that meeting, there was definitely recognition that the current structure is perhaps insufficient, both in terms of the administrative structure, but also the system that we're utilizing itself. The board moved to immediately reassemble its technology committee with a more appropriate constitution of that committee. We hosted that meeting today, in fact, and I think that was a very, very productive meeting. And so we have some recommendations to be forthcoming from that group that will provide both some stopgap intermediate-term assistance as well as hopefully formulation for a long-term plan. The city of Fairborn has stepped forward and volunteered to potentially locate, moving a lot of that core infrastructure to their facility, but doing so in a way that it would be completely segregated from their systems, unlike the situation we have with Xenia today where it's really embedded in our network systems in a very confined space in the basement of our justice center. So very positive conversation there. I met with the Fairborn City Manager and we've kind of devised some, some goals and objectives and a way forward meeting with the other managers and administrators from around the county. There will be increased cost to figure out a structure that's sustainable for these services. And again, just to give our viewing audience some context, anytime you call 911 and we dispatch, this is anywhere in the county, fire EMS, police, there's a, a backbone system that helps coordinate all of those applications and all those computers across the county. Record-keeping system, it's, it's a very sophisticated and complex system that really helps to improve the efficiency of our firefighters and officers.
And that's through any call center?
Any call center. Xenia, Green Central, Fairborn, Beaver Creek, every agency in the county, law enforcement, fire rescue, is utilizing this system. It is a critical system for our frontline responders and, and the, the sustainability of that system and reliability of that system is very much in question today, so we're trying to come up with a solution to that. So again, I can answer any individual questions you might have offline, but just want to let you know that that, that is moving forward. Bad news is I'm not even halfway done. Next item, many of you may not have had an opportunity to view email for this night, tonight's meeting, but I did send along an email regarding the Sycamore Bridge project. As you may recall, during our walking tour earlier this year, we had discussion with council on that project. And the marching orders that council gave at that time, I would, I would define it as a lukewarm support, given the grant opportunity that we had, but a lot of concerns about the engineering cost upfront. Recall that the city's responsible for 100% of the engineering cost. The state would cover 100% of construction cost up to a certain amount, but if there was any overage on that, the city was also responsible. The state has gone forward based on our initial response and solicited quotes for the engineering services. That's essentially come back almost $100,000 more than what their original, original estimate was. So looking at about a $298,000 cost for just the engineering and the construction right now is still estimated at about $515,000. So pursuant to our prior conversation, council had reservations about going over that $200,000 amount. We're pushing $300,000 now. I wanted to get a sense from all of you as to whether or not you want to move forward or withdraw and postpone this proj, this project at this time. Staff does not feel that there would necessarily be any adverse impact from ODOT's perspective if we elected to forego that opportunity now and delay it. We think that we'd have still an opportunity in the future to be funded. So I think generally our, our recommendation is maybe we pull this and, and wait at this time. There are some things that we can do with our maintenance staff to sort of shore up that bridge, and we postpone this for a cycle or two and then perhaps resubmit for that grant in the future. But again, I wanted to get some feedback from council on that.
So this bridge, just everybody remembers, it, it services three residences in what used to be the old Deep Canal Power Plant originally, which turned into a car maintenance location, which turned into nothing over time.
Yes.
Right, and that's the property that we've acquired there through the Brownfield Grant. We were able to tear down the old facility, but due to the contamination of ground, there's not much that can really be done with that property there.
Yeah.
Something is fairly limited with that. And, but we, we also have that old bridge that provides signal lane car access back into that area right now.
Yes, yeah.
So is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, and I, I think, you know, I should also point out that between our planning and public service staff, we still need to formulate an, an ingress egress solution for that Collier property site. We're envisioning that as being either passive park space or, or parking lot or combination of both. We don't feel that that Sycamore Street entrance is sufficient as both an ingress and egress for that, so we have been floating different options to come off of Detroit Street. We talked about this when we met. We've not finalized a plan for that yet. And so I think until we do that, it might be a good idea to wait on this to decide if we, we really want to invest in this, you know, at the end of the day or not.
Yeah.
So is there like funding for property acquisition? Because, you know, when you, I said, you sent that email out. I, I looked on the Green County Property Auditor's page, and that, those properties, those three combined are only at $216.
Yeah.
So to me, it almost makes sense to acquire that, then spend half a million.
Yeah.
Three quarters of a million to work on a bridge.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, I couldn't agree more. The council, or, we've had a discussion with council previously, and staff has previously made some attempts at, at grant applications, which were for the most part denied. I would agree, I think that is a, a better overall solution, and I think something we should perhaps take into consideration with all of us. There may be some flood, flood prevention grants, there may be some other monies available to us, and I, I think we overall feel like a comprehensive solution to that entire area and making that entire area part of a broader hub district, rotational complex might be a really good idea. I should also mention, you know, adjacent to that area, we're still working on the Collier property and, and remediation there, but the crews that we have, the Mr. Urschel coordinates through, Priscilla Pope, have done a fantastic job behind Xenia Station. And that improvement alone, paired with what's happening with the Collier property, and then ultimately having a solution for that entire area, I think can really make that whole area improve. But again, you know, we need to go back to ODOT with some indication as to whether or not we're going to move forward, given the conversation we had with council before, kind of right up against that mandate of what you've given us, the staff. Again, I think our feeling is we probably forego this for now. For your reason, Mr. Smith, as well as others, let's come up with a longer-term plan to see whether this is the most, the best use of monies.
I, I find passing on this, that doesn't, that's not so much an issue. I know with other grants, when we turn it down, that puts us on the bad list, just in layman's terms, right? We get pushed to the back. Are we doing that?
Yeah.
And if it's so, that's okay, but I just.
No, I asked that question pointing to the engineer. He did not feel, this program's a little different because they're, they're often looking for, for project opportunities for this municipal bridge program. It's not quite the same competitive nature as some of the other monies through MBRPC, for example. They did not feel there would be any adverse effect to the city's disposition for a future application.
Great, thank you. I'm comfortable putting out a hold.
Okay. Cody, what are you thinking? Let's just go around, get everybody's feeling here. What's your sense?
Yeah, I'm good with putting on the background.
It's gonna be like a total show.
Levi?
Yeah.
It's about to bow. Yeah, let's just wait.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I agree as well. That's, that's, that's a lot of money when we don't really have a good solid plan for that area.
Yeah.
And I just, personally, just don't feel like we should be investing that kind of, those kind of funds until we really know that that's. Again, we've inherited a, an infrastructure and, and a subset of the community, but really with no sense of, of if that's really what we're going to be carrying forward.
Yeah, it's tough to cost benefit from this one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's all I needed on that one. Also want to let council know that we're finalizing some recommendations on some public service reorganization changes, and we'll be bringing that, those recommendations back through our Public Service and Utilities Committee. And again, some of that may include some changes to the structure and/or staffing complement. So we'll be having some conversation with that committee process, and then to the extent that committee endorses some of those recommendations, we bring that back to council probably by the end of the year for, for some final consideration. Also, the market district, we've made some, some great announcements at the Harvest Festival. Had really positive public feedback based on what we've submitted out there publicly as to what folks can expect. We have a really consequential meeting tomorrow morning, very excited about, with our, our development partners, and so we're looking forward to putting some concrete plans in place. Two weeks ago, we had a great meeting with the Green County Port Authority and got a glowing endorsement from the Port Authority and I, I think a high degree of interest in, in their participation in the project. So things are, are beginning to come together, and I would look, probably first quarter next year, we should have a series of agenda items coming back to council to really get these pieces cemented contractually and then move that project forward. So I look forward to that. I want to thank all of the volunteers, our staff members, all the organizations that provided support for our Harvest on Main. We eked out before the weather set in, yeah, I think a pretty good event, and of course you can never second guess what Mother Nature's gonna do. But again, thanks to all the folks who, who helped make that a success. Another thing, another sign of the season, we do have our beggars' night coming up Tuesday, October 31st. That's next Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is a rain or shine event. The only reason we would postpone that is if we had, you know, serious implement weather that was projected. At this point, I think it's gonna, the temperatures are gonna take a dip, but I think we should be fine from a rain perspective. So again, we encourage folks to go out and participate in, in beggars' night for, for residents to be aware that the kids will be in, out that night, so please be careful if you're driving on the roadways. I want to remind folks that we will be closed for Veterans Day, that's November 10th. In observance of that holiday, that Friday, November 10th, we will be closed to public business for our, our city offices. We also want to remind folks to put on their calendar, the Christmas Station, our annual Christmas event, will be coming up on December 1st. That's from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Xenia Station and downtown. We're very excited to host that event. We'll be putting out more marketing materials in the coming days for that. Yeah, I see some images from, of that event from last year. We'll have mostly the same events, some new activities as well. Again, some things downtown and really extending all the way down to Xenia Station, where the Santa House will be an opportunity for kids to be able to sit and express all of their Christmas list needs and wishes for Santa down there. So again, invite folks to come on out. Finally, and then I'll shut up, we do want to let council know we are anticipating the need for an executive session. I think we're projecting that at 5:30 on November 9th. So again, I'll get that clear with the council president, but just wanted you all to be able to anticipate ahead of time that we, that we will have that need. One final suggestion, and I had not talked to the council president about this, but our rotation for our roundtable work session has been the second meeting of the month. We moved that this month for a number of different reasons. And looking ahead, our next two second meetings will be the week of Thanksgiving and the week after Christmas. So I wanted to put it out there, would you like to amend that rotation and just continue with what we're doing now, that first meeting of the month for the next two months?
Yeah.
Back in January?
I was gonna bring that up anyways, I think that's more, especially for this next two months. We're so close.
Yeah.
In with the holidays and that second one that.
And we do have a lot going on, so I, I think it's important that we continue to have those discussions, so I do want to get those monthly discussions in. So I do want to get those monthly discussions in. So if it's all right, then we'll just go ahead and plan to do that accordingly.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be back. Thank you very much. Unless you have questions.
I have a question. So Mayor, have you been in contact with Santa's elves? We have Santa for hometown Christmas.
Yes.
Has Santa been acquired? Okay.
Santa will definitely be there.
Okay, we have Santa.
Santa's always there. One way or the other, Santa shows up.
I just wanted to make sure.
Don't worry, children.
Acquired, was that the word?
Acquire Santa. He magically appears.
Right.
I'm sure that it's going to be handled well.
That's good. I didn't know if that was on the state acquisition list, Santa's, is that? Okay, good.
We need to talk afterwards.
Does anybody have any questions for comments for Brent? Yeah, I just wanted to say, Brent, for the staff and everybody, the organization of the Harvest Festival was just amazing. And, you know, we can't control the weather, you know, but we got in a good chunk of hours of time there and it was very well attended. And the quality of that thing just keeps going up every year, just spot on. So thanks so much for your guys.
Absolutely. And to all the volunteers and organizations as well. They play a huge role in the success of that. So thanks to them.
Okay. Let's go to council comments. Councilman Dean?
Nothing else.
Councilman Brandon?
Just want to add that next plan met on the 18th. It was a good meeting. There was a decent amount of attendance, quite a little less than normal. We just, they had some maps set up, Brian, and the consulting firm, basically just pinpointing different areas of the city that we thought that needed, needed some love or park space that needed love or even just bad intersections and that sort of thing that we think are just safety hazards. And so it was nice to get with the group and kind of do a more interactive planning versus just, hey, what's the feedback from the surveys and that sort of thing. Be on the lookout for possibly some placards at different local restaurants that might be at tables, at different settings and tables and outdoors as well, just to, just continue to take those surveys.
Yeah, that's great. Cody, thanks for working with that as well, too. I mean, this is just a really critical tool in our planning box here and getting both the community feedback and looking at these things. And so it's, thanks for taking some time to work on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything else to add.
Mr. Vice President?
All right, thank you. So kind of busy. Thanks to the city again for the Harvest on Main. I got to attend that for a few hours before it rained. That was a lot of fun. Also, on October 17th, we did have the budget meeting. And I'd like to thank Councilman Dean, President Herschel, and myself. That meeting, we went over some kind of encouraging numbers, but then some kind of discouraging numbers. So just a lot of costs involved in running your city. So thanks to the finance department for putting those numbers together for us. And also, last week, had the opportunity to attend a meet the candidate night provided by Green County Tea Party. That was at the senior center. And that was, that was a great night. Council candidates, school board candidates, proponents of issue one, opponents of issue one, and two, were both there as well as the three local tax levies for senior center council on aging. And please help me. Developmental disabilities, thank you. And so a lot of things on the ballot.
And also the judge got to comment.
Yes, he did. Yes, thank you. And school board candidates were there, so just a great night. We were in and out there in a couple hours, a lot of fun there. Also, last Tuesday, just this past Tuesday, literally 2,000 students and families attended the Xenia Community Schools trunk or treat event at Xenia High School. Well attended. Like to thank Superintendent Gabe Lofton and Xenia Community Schools staff and their partners for putting that event on. We started passing out candy at 5:30 and supposed to be over at 7:30, and there was no end in sight for the line. Last piece of candy that I gave out was at 8:20. So we went almost an hour over and just lots of fun, beautiful weather. Couldn't ask for a better event. Just, kids just have a blast with that. And so it's just becoming almost a signature event now in our community. So that was great. So thanks to them for that. And then, you know, just a reminder, beggars' night's next Tuesday, 6:00 to 8:00. It's gonna be cold, so dress warm. Watch those kids running across the street. And also just wanted to apologize, there was actually a meet the candidate night tonight at AMU Church. I wasn't able to attend due to our council meeting tonight. So good luck to those that went to that event. I tried to discourage them from doing it tonight, but they wouldn't budge. So had to choose the council meeting and I'm glad I'm here. So thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight and looking forward to seeing everybody at the next meeting.
Great.
Thanks.
Sure. Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things to report. On Friday, the 13th, we had the 21st Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It's a huge honor to be a part of that. That is something that the Christian Men's Fellowship has been putting on for years. That was a vision of Jim Kennedy and several others. They do a fantastic job. So it's a lot of fun to be a part of, well over 300 people this year. We had a great speaker, Brian Hanson, works with Capital Ministries. Thanks to Emmanuel Baptist for hosting and to McCoys for catering, and it was a great morning. I look forward to it every year. Also, on that same day, there was a dedication of the mural at Shawnee Park. Judge Amy Lewis and her staff put that together, applied for our grant and got the funding for that, worked with K-12 Galleries. It's a beautiful design. It's been a lot of fun to see that come together and it really is very special in our, in our signature part. So that was a lot of fun to be a part of that dedication. Also wanted to thank so many people for the work for Harvest on Main. I know Christina Shaker, Ryan Baker, Carly French. I especially wanted to mention Becky Hawks over at the Flower Gift Box and all the efforts that she puts into that. She's the one who is the contact person for all the craft vendors, everybody that comes to sell their goods. Becky puts that together as a volunteer and she is good at it, she works hard at it, she has a lot of passion for that. So very thankful for her work. On Monday, the 23rd, had a couple of different meetings just with some community stakeholders, Clark State, Kettering Health, just hearing some different things that are happening in their organizations. On the 24th, again, the trunk or treat event, I wanted to thank Wes for letting me crash his booth, even though it was a Bengals theme when I showed up for Brown.
She had us kind of tenuous there for a little bit, but...
We needed to balance things out with a winning team. So it was really great to be a part of it. Thursday, today, on the 26th, I had an opportunity to speak at three different classes at Cedar Valley University with one of their communication professors, asked me to come out and speak about what does it look like to be an advocate for your community? How does professional speaking play into that? What does it look like to be involved in your local government? We talked about foster care, adoption, you name it, we talked about it. I let those college kids ask me just about anything. We went to some interesting places today. But wanted to thank Tiffany Thompson for inviting me out to the university and speaking to those three classes. It was a lot of fun. I believe that is a thank you to you as well. You have covered several events for me in the last week and I'll let you talk about those. But really appreciate when I can't make something, I can't do all of the things. So just a council, president, vice president that are very supportive and help cover those. So thank you.
Yeah, so I had the opportunity to go to the retirement of suffrage bishop Marvin and Dr. Ida Graves. And that was their 50th. And then also at their church was their 99, celebration of 99 years of being president of church. And the church is located right at the far end of East Third Street there. And what a celebration that was. I mean, it was uplifting. I mean, there's no one who could have gone there that could not have gone away just being so encouraged. And to all of the district and state representatives of their congregation and church were present, local folks. And I just would say that over and over, there were folks that were sharing there to say how that couple had impacted their lives in the last 50 years. And folks have said, if it hadn't been for them and them entering their lives, their lives are gonna be a lot different vector. And so it was just, it was just really encouraging. So just a great evening. Thanks, thanks for giving me the opportunity to go and represent. We were able to give a, two proclamations there, one for them and one for the church that was signed by the mayor. And I know that was encouragement for them as well, too. Also attended the Legacy Christian Fall Festival. And, you know, once again, our community has a number of educational opportunities that a lot of communities just don't have. So we have the Xenia Community Schools, we have Legacy Christian, we've got the Esteem Academy, which is STEM with arts, which is up and running now in our community. We have a number of homeschool organizations, both parochial and non-parochial homeschool. We have St. Bridgetts as well here in our community. And so for folks who are moving in, there's, you know, especially if you're a family, there's a lot of questions about, okay, what's gonna happen with education for my kids? And the beauty of Xenia is we've got a broad spectrum of things available to them here and each of those are just quality, quality things. So that was a great time. They have moved their festival, same day as our, as our Harvest Festival, they have chosen to move theirs inside, but it started later on the day. So it was a good transition to go from ours that was outside to theirs that was inside as well, too. But just being there with the kids and the families and just a really encouraging environment. Well, it turned out, they must have had probably 200, 300 folks that came to their, to their event as well, too. Then also had an opportunity to go to the Jeremiah Tree Fall Banquet and hosted out at the Merge Center. And it's, I'll tell you, one of the, one of the great things that we're starting to see is the synergy between multiple service organizations geared towards helping men and women out of addiction. And knowing that Merge is up and running now with their, with their residential treatment program, I think, Kip said they've got around 40, 45 guys out there right now. They're gonna be opening up women's as well and then also a housing for youth that have timed out of the foster care program as well, too. But to see them partnering well, Jeremiah Tree has the home in Jasper Township and some group homes, a number of them here in town as well. But just to hear from the men that are, that are in those homes and seeing the valuable things that go on in their lives. And one of the things that was really amazing is, is that they are spending every day as they're part of the program, doing community service as well, too. And just being aware of that. So that was, that was just a great opportunity. And I would say that, once again, kudos to the school system for the, for the trunk or treat. They were, there were over 50 community organizations that participated in providing for the kids there, but also giving some information for them as well, too. We had folks from our fire department were out there as well and we were representing well from a city perspective. But to get that many people from our community in, in an event that just, there's no tension. I mean, it's just, just encouragement all the way around. To see those kids engaging with all those different organizations from a really positive perspective was just a, a great, a great thing. So anyways, just kudos to the, to the schools for getting that up and running for us as well, too. And I just want to, you know, the number of things we have going on right now, just want to tell the staff, thank you for all the things and everything that we have going. Like Brandon said, we have lots of good things, but, but all of those, there's a financial component to all the things we have working on. There's a, there's a legal component that has that, there's a managerial component. And many times it drops down into the, to the depths of a particular organization, you know, whether it's on, you know, fire, police, you know, our, our engineering, you know, services, those kind of things. So not only, each of these folks have their own regular day job, they're also supporting a number of initiatives we're getting behind here as well, too. I would say that two of the items specifically we're looking at, we're in the finance committee that we're hoping to bring back to the broader council that we'd like to see in the budget. Once again, these are just discussions at this time, we're talking about them, is the potential of getting someone to help us coordinate some programming activities at our parks over the summertime. You know, we've got our 13 community parks, but, you know, at present, we have no one that's organizing some planned regular activities there in the summertime. So we've, we've had some discussions with, with AIA and Green County Parks and Rec. And so one of the things I'm hoping we can bring back to everybody is at least some potential funds over that short period, three months of the summer to get some, some programming going on there. Majority of the other communities around us already have that and we're not looking to add staff to that. But we, the other beauty is we've got two great organizations, the Green County Parks that are already doing some good things like this and athletes in action here within our city bounds that has a lot of talented folks that we could tap into that. And then the other one, we talked to Ryan about getting some initial funding, looking at our residential street program. And understand that we've, we've taken our $800,000 million a year that we've had within the, the street program. We've been matching that over the last number of years to do the major thoroughfares because we can get some fairly substantial grants from the state to be able to do that. And that's really, that's, that's double the funds that we've had to be able to put into that. But there, there are no grant programs for residential streets. That's, that's just the municipality. As we've, we've looked at engaging with what would that look like for us to actually do a long-term maintenance program for those residential areas? And to start putting some seed money into that, it's gonna take a lot more than that. And once again, this isn't a one-year thing, right? This is, this is a catch-up over the next 20 years and then maintaining at, at that point. But just want to let the rest of the council know that we're gonna have some discussion as well on the budget when we come back on, on that, too. Thanks everyone for your, for your time and...
Do you want to mention anything about the platoon support that you need today? Or do you need, Dr. Herschel's platoon?
No, yeah. Do you mind? You want me to talk about that?
If you want, I'll sit to your...
Yeah. Another item is, and this is just coming from, out of the community. We've got one, one young man who's over in Iraq right now with his engineering battalion that's over there, that's from our community. And as a matter of fact, his dad's on our fire department. And I don't know if you've been aware of what's going on here internationally, but our, our units that are in the Middle East are, are under sustained attack right now. And so they're basically in a defensive posture. But part of also what happens with that, that puts, that puts a real strain on just providing just even basics to these guys. Because their, their logistics and stuff is getting switched over to combat arena. And there's a couple of the moms that are involved with this unit have said, hey, there's just a lot of just, they're in a lot, they're under a lot of stress right now as well, too. And it would be great as us, as us as a community to come alongside of them and just provide them some, some, some things that they're not able to get. A lot of these areas, the basic exchanges or those kind of things are getting shut down, the commissaries, because they're, they're not operating those anymore. So we're just talking about personal hygiene items, snacks, things, just that they're not, clothing items and things. We're not talking about the combat clothing, which is their day-to-day clothing and things like that. And so they've put together a list of those items and they're looking to do a collection of that. And they contacted Sarah and myself. And what they're really saying is, could we just put up a, you know, a bin in a couple of public areas, put that list of items? And they would do the collection, they've got that organization set up already. They're looking to do that in the next couple of weeks.
And they need to get some Christmas boxes together.
Yeah, and they really like to get this put together for the guys, the gals for Christmas time.
Can you forward that email?
Yeah, I've got all the information. It's right now for this particular platoon, it's one mom who has undertaken one specific platoon. And so they're in desperate need of just, as he said, hygiene, basic snacks, a few fun items that they're just, they've got very little right now.
Right, right. You know, and these guys and gals, they get it, they've signed up for this, but when, when, when these kind of things are going on and you're getting airstrikes that are coming in on, on what may occur on a weekly basis or even more at this point. And who knows what they're gonna be called to do here in the next couple of months or two. It just, it's just good to get some support from home. So, Brian, one of my questions is, you know, could we put a donation station down here in our front office area or, I mean, or welcome area down there in the front?
Probably here in the Justice Center. So if you could forward some of that information while our public relations folks and our front desk folks kind of coordinate that and...
And, and put that on our social media, possibly even, I know it's a little ways